Good evening, everybody. Grab a seat. The April 10th, 2024 special meeting of the Malibu City Council is now called to order. In-person participants, if you would like to speak, please submit your request to speak to a forum to our clerk here on my right. Remote participants, if you'd like to speak, please join the Zoom meeting printed on the agenda and raise your hand in Zoom when the item wish to speak on is called. Kelsey, can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Grisanti.
Here.
Councilmember Riggins.
Here.
Councilmember Silverstein.
Present.
Mayor Protem Stewart.
Here.
Mayor Yurin.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Hans, allegiance and the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Can I get a report and post in the agenda, please, Kelsey?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on April 9th, 2024.
Okay, I need an approval of the agenda. I need a motion.
I'd like a motion to approve the agenda.
Need a second.
Second.
Thank you very much, all in favor?
Aye.
I have it, okay. We're going to turn this over, I'm going to turn this over to staff because they have put together this presentation, but I just want to...
Public comment?
Are there any public comments?
We're going to hear a brief introductory, introductory presentation and then take public comment and then the school district separation team will take you through a more detailed presentation.
And just for those of you who are either doing on Zoom or here in the meeting, I mean, this has been a long program and one of the major steps in making this separation work has been trying to figure out how we allocate the money, right? And what we've been able to do, what I've, and I say what we've been able to do, it's really been the team who's been negotiating this has worked out a revenue sharing agreement, which I think is very good, which takes care of what Malibu wants to do, takes care of what the Santa Monica School District needs. So what we're going to be doing is going through that tonight and giving you a perspective of what that entails and how it's been put together. So with that, I would like to turn it over to our staff. Alexis, you're on, take us through what you think we want to do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to first turn it over to Christine Wood, who's the lead project, or the lead on this project, and she'll provide a few remarks and then I'll talk about what we're going to do here in council chambers.
Christine, you're on, please.
Thank you, Council and Mayor. As you know, my name is Christine Wood. I'm the deputy city attorney for the City of Malibu. Very excited tonight because we have reached a milestone in a very long negotiations process with the Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District. As you know, the City of Malibu decided officially about in 2017 to pursue a petition before the Los Angeles County Office of Education's County Committee to pursue an independent Malibu Unified School District. And there's been a long process of both petitions and presentations before the County Committee. But since about 2020, we have been in negotiations with the Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District to negotiate a revenue sharing agreement of sorts. Last fall, as you know, we identified what that would look like and, and it was as a result of what happened last fall, we have formulated and reached a preliminary agreement with the Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District around a revenue sharing agreement. And so today, we're here to share that, the terms of that agreement with the community. This is a huge milestone. It's a really big step. Everything else is, you know, kind of gravy, right? As long as we can reach financial agreement with the district, that, that really leads, creates a pathway for an independent Malibu Unified School District. So today you will see a presentation from the school separation consultants. Those consultants include Kathy Domenico from Capital Financial Group. I was close. Latanya Kirk-Carter from Kirk-Carter Associates. And one of our newer consultants to the team who is bringing a significant amount of educational and operational expertise and presence to our team is local resident Mike Matthews, who is a consultant for the school separation team and has really been acting as an administrator for many of the things that we're thinking about and doing for the group. So you will see a presentation today and then we will go in depth on different components of the revenue sharing agreement and take questions. That is what we're doing today and I guess at this point I'll turn it back to Kelsey, who might open it for a public comment.
Yes, Mayor, I have not received any speaker slips and I do not have any raised hands in Zoom currently, so that would close formal public comment.
Very good, thank you. Hopefully we'll get some of you folks up on camera so they can see who you are because you have done a wonderful job. I mean, it has been a long path and you guys have hung in there and put it together for us, so I want to thank you all very, very much for that and everybody should get to see who you are because it's been, it's been a hard task. Alexis or Christine, do we turn it back to you? You, you guys know what you want to do next, so...
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. If I can ask, Kathy will be getting situated up on the podium here to start the presentation. Just as a brief overview of what to expect in terms of next steps for those that are joining us on Zoom and, and here in the audience, we've broken out this presentation for the revenue sharing agreement in four different segments. So we'll be going through the base year, the annual allocation, the termination clause, and protections. As we make our way through each segment, we will be able to answer some of the questions from the council following the presentation. We will open it up to questions and comments from our in-person and remote participants. And then we will, based off of those questions, present a number of scenarios that can better help emphasize where we're at with the revenue sharing and what to expect. Our overall goals with this is just once again to emphasize that our, in terms of moving this forward, is local control and education for what that looks like in Malibu. And so with that, I'm going to ask Kathy to begin the presentation.
Hello.
You're on, very good.
Thank you. Thank you for having us here tonight, Mayor and Council. I'm pleased to be here. It's, we've had a lot of team members that have been part of this process for years. I've been part of this, I think, five and a half years and it's, it's a really great step in the process as both, I'm not able to advance the slides. Better? Is that working? Not working. There we go. Thank you. Right? Somebody click for me. So as you are all familiar, the Malibu residents have expressed a desire for a separate Malibu Unified School District, separate and apart from the Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District. The city itself has identified this as a priority and in 2015, really has been, since 2015, has really been actively working on a potential separation. In 2017, the City of Malibu officially submitted a petition to the Los Angeles County Committee on School District Organization and that really kicked off a formal process for achieving the separation. As you all know at the council, but maybe the public doesn't know, that petition process actually was paused pending negotiations between the city and school district specifically related to financial terms. And that's really the purpose of tonight's meeting is to start to have a public discussion about some of those financial terms. The, the two parties, the city representing the interests of the future Malibu Unified School District and the Santa Monica Malibu, Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District representing the interests of the future Santa Monica Unified School District have been in mediation since February of 2022. In November of 2022, a term sheet was adopted by both parties that really set forth the parameters for agreements that would memorialize a potential separation. There are three agreements in the process. The first is a revenue sharing agreement. That is the document that we want to disclose today and provide some context for the community and provide an opportunity to ask questions. Once we have that input, it will come back formally to you as a council and the school board for ratification. We are also working on an operational agreement. It's in process, not at the point where we're really going to talk about some of the details of that at this point. That'll come later. And then we have a joint powers agreement that will come after the other two agreements have, have been put in place. The other concept in the term sheet is that we really needed to set forth a formula for allocating revenues. This, the existing school district is what is called a basic aid district. It is property tax funded. It is not funded in the same way as most school districts in California. When the districts separate, we expect that the individual school districts will also be basic aid, meaning they're property tax funded, basically how a city or other special district is funded. It's just different from how school districts in California are typically funded. And as a result, the typical separation, how funds are allocated, really doesn't apply here. So as a result, the term sheet called for a revenue sharing agreement to specifically outline how those property tax revenues and other local revenues of the, of the existing district will be allocated between the future Malibu Unified School District and future Santa Monica Unified School District. So although there are three, two other agreements that will really facilitate the separation, this revenue sharing agreement was a very important first step in the process and that is going to be the focus of our discussion tonight. I want to go into a little more detail on the purpose of the three agreements, just to give you some context and why we may not be focusing on issues that probably are important to the public, I would assume they are. We're just not quite at a stage to discuss those components just yet. But in the tax revenue sharing agreement, I mentioned, we're memorializing the allocation of revenues between the future districts, the successor educational entities is what we're referring to them as. The operational agreement is kind of an operation transition agreement. That's the one that's in progress and it's going to memorialize the allocation and transition of staffing, of operational processes. How do you separate an IT department into two different ones? It'll look at assets, liabilities, and other resources and how that actual transition is going to be implemented. Again, we'll be talking about that later on at a different date. And then the last agreement will be a joint powers authority agreement. This is an entity that will be created to really administer and facilitate the execution of these various agreements and to act kind of as a liability body as this new, these two new agencies move forward. Again, those, that agreement is coming in the future. Throughout the mediation and as part of the term sheet, there were two main guiding principles and those principles were used for that mediation and the ultimate agreement of the revenue sharing agreement. The formation of an independent Malibu Unified School District is in the best interest of all students. And each successor entity shall be allocated a sufficient share of funding to provide a similar, similar level of service at each school site as prior to separation. Those are the two guiding principles that really set the stage for our mediation sessions and that revenue sharing agreement itself. But as you can imagine, each of the two parties had slightly different goals in this revenue sharing agreement. The goals for the Malibu Unified School District were number one, to achieve local control of future school district operations. We have that bolded, that, that's bold for a reason. We're going to kind of keep coming back to that, but the local control was priority number one. We also want to maintain revenues, the Santa Monica's revenues, to preserve their ability to fund existing services. So as we move out on our own, we already have the guiding principle that we wanted to at least have the same level of service as we previously did, but we also didn't want to harm Santa Monica students. We want to ensure sufficient funding at a level to deliver at least the same level of service, I just mentioned that, and set forth a concrete timeframe of the revenue sharing for the district. So this wasn't something that was going on into perpetuity. At some point, both districts would be completely independent of each other. Those were the main goals in the negotiations on the Malibu side. On the Santa Monica side, their goals were to achieve this per student funding at the same level as with the current district. They wanted to realize at least 4% annual growth in overall unrestricted funding and they wanted to eliminate a financial cliff when the revenue sharing payments from Malibu to Santa Monica terminated. One of the concerns was that if the payment ceased to exist, they're going to have one year, a drop in revenues that they weren't going to be able to make up for. So that was one of their concerns and one of their goals in the RSA, in the revenue sharing agreement. So now that we've talked about this in concept, we want to go through some, the revenue sharing formula itself and just give you an idea of what the formula looks like. We're going to talk, the formula itself is spelled out in the agreement, but there are several other components and protections that are included. So the way this presentation is set up is to first go through and digest what the base formula itself is, what the formula itself is. Then we're going to talk about the termination and what would trigger termination of the agreement. Then we're going to talk about protections that are built into the agreement for both Malibu and Santa Monica. And we're kind of staggering these out because as we go through the formula, it's natural to ask questions of what happens if? Well, a lot of those what happens if scenarios are going to be handled in the protection language that we'll talk about at the end. So we're going to try to kind of boil this down into small components to really help facilitate the discussion and help everybody understand the components of the agreement. There are two main components to the formula itself, to the revenue sharing formula. The first is a base year calculation, the second is an annual calculation. The base year calculation is done exactly once. It is only done in the first year of separation. So it is done for the funding of that initial year of the new Malibu Unified School District. It is used to establish the Santa Monica funding target. So the formula, although it's Malibu paying to Santa Monica, it is, the, the formula is based on Santa Monica's funding level. So I want to kind of keep that in mind. It's based on Santa Monica's funding level. So that base year calculation, the purpose of that calculation is number one, to determine the funding target, the amount of money Santa Monica should achieve and then to determine how much money Malibu would need to provide Santa Monica in order to reach that funding target. That happens once in the base year. Once the funding target is established, we would then use the annual calculation. That annual calculation is calculated in each subsequent fiscal year until the agreement is terminated. And I mentioned, we'll talk about the termination in a moment. It is used specifically to determine the amount of property tax revenue that Malibu needs to provide to Santa Monica to achieve 4% growth in their unrestricted general fund revenues. So those are the two formula components. Let me go into the base here a little bit more. So here's the real concept of the base year formula because the revenue sharing agreement, it kind of spells it out in a lot of detail, but here are the main parts. We are first going to look to identify the revenue per pupil, per student of the existing Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District. So what, on a per student basis, how much does the district currently have in revenues? And we, we call that simply the per pupil revenue. But in the agreement, we adjust that figure to account for the fact that Malibu schools are more expensive to operate. There are smaller class sizes, the schools themselves are smaller than the Santa Monica schools. So as a result, the Malibu students are more expensive. So the formula adjusts that per pupil revenue amount to account for the fact that Santa Monica will not need as much money per student to educate their kids once they are their own independent district. The second step in the formula is to determine the funding target. Remember, I mentioned to start with, in year one, what we're trying to figure out is how much Santa Monica needs in order to sustain their operations at the same level as they previously were providing students. So we take that per pupil, that adjusted per pupil funding amount and apply it to the number of students, so you multiply it by their enrollment and that creates a funding target. It is that funding target that carries forward into the future. The third step is to compare revenues of Santa Monica. How much money does Santa Monica?
Really, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to start to have a public discussion about some of those financial terms. The two parties, the city representing the interests of the future Malibu Unified School District and the Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District representing the interests of the future Santa Monica Unified School District, have been in mediation since February of 2022. In November of 2022, a term sheet was adopted by both parties that really set forth the parameters for agreements that would memorialize a potential separation. There are three agreements in the process. The first is a revenue sharing agreement. That is the document that we want to disclose today and provide some context for the community and provide an opportunity to ask questions. Once we have that input, it will come back formally to you as a council and the school board for ratification. We are also working on an operational agreement. It's in process, not at the point where we're really going to talk about some of the details of that at this point. That'll come later. And then we have a joint powers agreement that will come after the other two agreements have been put in place. The other concept in the term sheet is that we really needed to set forth a formula for allocating revenues. The existing school district is what is called a basic aid district. It is property tax funded. It is not funded in the same way as most school districts in California. When the districts separate, we expect that the individual school districts will also be basic aid, meaning they're property tax funded, basically how a city or other special district is funded. It's just different from how school districts in California are typically funded. And as a result, the typical separation, how funds are allocated, really doesn't apply here. So as a result, the term sheet called for a revenue sharing agreement to specifically outline how those property tax revenues and other local revenues of the existing district will be allocated between the future Malibu Unified School District and future Santa Monica Unified School District. So although there are two other agreements that will really facilitate the separation, this revenue sharing agreement was a very important first step in the process, and that is going to be the focus of our discussion tonight. I want to go into a little more detail on the purpose of the three agreements, just to give you some context and why we may not be focusing on issues that probably are important to the public. I would assume they are. We're just not quite at a stage to discuss those components just yet. But in the tax revenue sharing agreement, I mentioned we're memorializing the allocation of revenues between the future districts, the successor educational entities is what we're referring to them as. The operational agreement is kind of an operation transition agreement. That's the one that's in progress, and it's going to memorialize the allocation and transition of staffing, of operational processes. How do you separate an IT department into two different ones? It'll look at assets, liabilities, and other resources, and how that actual transition is going to be implemented. Again, we'll be talking about that later on at a different date. And then the last agreement will be a joint powers authority agreement. This is an entity that will be created to really administer and facilitate the execution of these various agreements and to act kind of as a liability body as these two new agencies move forward. Again, that agreement is coming in the future. Throughout the mediation and as part of the term sheet, there were two main guiding principles. And those principles were used for the mediation and the ultimate agreement of the revenue sharing agreement. The formation of an independent Malibu Unified School District is in the best interest of all students. And each successor entity shall be allocated a sufficient share of funding to provide a similar level of service at each school site as prior to separation. Those are the two guiding principles that really set the stage for our mediation sessions and that revenue sharing agreement itself. But as you can imagine, each of the two parties had slightly different goals in this revenue sharing agreement. The goals for the Malibu Unified School District were, number one, to achieve local control of future school district operations. We have that bolded. That's bold for a reason. We're going to kind of keep coming back to that, but the local control was priority number one. We also want to maintain revenues, the Santa Monica's revenues, to preserve their ability to fund existing services. So as we move out on our own, we already have the guiding principle that we wanted to at least have the same level of service as we previously did, but we also didn't want to harm Santa Monica students. We want to ensure sufficient funding at a level to deliver at least the same level of service, I just mentioned that, and set forth a concrete timeframe of the revenue sharing for the districts. So this wasn't something that was going on in perpetuity. At some point, both districts would be completely independent of each other. Those were the main goals in the negotiations on the Malibu side. On the Santa Monica side, their goals were to achieve this per student funding at the same level as with the current district. They wanted to realize at least 4% annual growth in overall unrestricted funding, and they wanted to eliminate a financial cliff when the revenue sharing payments from Malibu to Santa Monica terminated. One of the concerns was that if the payment ceased to exist, they're going to have one year, a drop in revenues that they weren't going to be able to make up for. So that was one of their concerns and one of their goals in the RSA, in the revenue sharing agreement. So now that we've talked about this in concept, we want to go through the revenue sharing formula itself and just give you an idea of what the formula looks like. We're going to talk, the formula itself is spelled out in the agreement, but there are several other components and protections that are included. So the way this presentation is set up is to first go through and digest what the base formula itself is, what the formula itself is. Then we're going to talk about the termination and what would trigger termination of the agreement. Then we're going to talk about protections that are built into the agreement for both Malibu and Santa Monica. And we're kind of staggering these out because as we go through the formula, it's natural to ask questions of what happens if? Well, a lot of those what happens if scenarios are going to be handled in the protection language that we'll talk about at the end. So we're going to try to kind of boil this down into small components to really help facilitate the discussion and help everybody understand the components of the agreement. There are two main components to the formula itself, to the revenue sharing formula. The first is a basier calculation. The second is an annual calculation. The basier calculation is done exactly once. It is only done in the first year of separation. So it is done for the funding of that initial year of the new Malibu Unified School District. It is used to establish the Santa Monica funding target. So the formula, although it's Malibu paying to Santa Monica, the formula is based on Santa Monica's funding level. So I want to kind of keep that in mind. It's based on Santa Monica's funding level. So that basier calculation, the purpose of that calculation is, number one, to determine the funding target, the amount of money Santa Monica should achieve, and then to determine how much money Malibu would need to provide Santa Monica in order to reach that funding target. That happens once in the base year. Once the funding target is established, we would then use the annual calculation. That annual calculation is calculated in each subsequent fiscal year until the agreement is terminated. And I mentioned, we'll talk about the termination in a moment. It is used specifically to determine the amount of property tax revenue that Malibu needs to provide to Santa Monica to achieve 4% growth in their unrestricted general fund revenues. So those are the two formula components. Let me go into the base here a little bit more. So here's the real concept of the basier formula, because the revenue sharing agreement, it kind of spells it out in a lot of detail, but here are the main parts. We are first going to look to identify the revenue per pupil, per student, of the existing Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District. So what, on a per student basis, how much does the district currently have in revenues? And we call that simply the per pupil revenue. But in the agreement, we adjust that figure to account for the fact that Malibu schools are more expensive to operate. There are smaller class sizes. The schools themselves are smaller than the Santa Monica schools. So as a result, the Malibu students are more expensive. So the formula adjusts that per pupil revenue amount to account for the fact that Santa Monica will not need as much money per student to educate their kids once they are their own independent district. The second step in the formula is to determine the funding target. Remember, I mentioned to start with, in year one, what we're trying to figure out is how much Santa Monica needs in order to sustain their operations at the same level as they previously were providing students. So we take that per pupil, that adjusted per pupil funding amount, and apply it to the number of students, so you multiply it by their enrollment, and that creates a funding target. It is that funding target that carries forward into the future. The third step is to compare revenues of Santa Monica. How much money does Santa Monica get on their own, and how does it compare to the funding target? If it is below the funding target, Malibu would make up the difference. That is called the property tax transfer amount. And so that's the initial concept. I don't expect everybody to go through all the details of the numbers, but for those that are numbers people, you have to do a little bit of a visual there. These are sample figures. So let's, there's nothing, we don't want to get married to the numbers, but when we plug the numbers into the formula, just to show you how we get to this per pupil funding number, we start with the unrestricted revenues of Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District in the year prior to separation, so when the district is still together. So you remember, this basier calculation happens once at the year of separation. So when the district is still together, what is the total unrestricted revenues? And we apply a growth factor because we're advancing one year. So we're looking at revenues the year before separation and advancing it into the current fiscal year, the year of separation. So we're applying that 4% growth rate, and then we're dividing it by the enrollment with an adjustment. So the adjustment again was, it's called the per pupil cost differential, and it's to account for the fact that, that, excuse me, that Malibu students are more expensive to educate. And the result is this adjusted per pupil funding amount. The next step is to take the adjusted funding amount and multiply it by the computed enrollment of Santa Monica. And so that results in this funding target, that funding target number, that 145 million sample number, is what would be carried forward into future fiscal years and inflated at 4%. We then compare the funding target to the amount of revenue that's attributable to Santa Monica Unified School District, their share of each of the revenue sources of the existing district. If their share is less than the funding target, Malibu would make up the difference. And that's, as you roll through the calculation, you see that that is kind of an estimated 16 million based on those sample numbers. And that becomes what we're referring to as the property tax transfer amount. So I'm going to pause, and this is kind of where we want to start breaking down the first step, which is this concept of the basier formula, and make sure that everybody has an understanding of the basier formula before we then go into the next component of the formula itself.
Thank you, Kathy. So at this point, what we would like to do is we would like to open up to those in person and on Zoom to ask any questions about the information that you just heard. If there's a clarifying question, if there's a little bit more you'd like to have expanded upon, again, these are questions on the basier formula that we just shared. And to do so, we do ask if you will come up to the podium. We'll give Kathy a minute to catch her breath because that was very complex to go through. And as you go through your questions, just give us a second, and either Kathy or one of our consultants, Latonya or Mr. Matthews, might jump in and answer for that.
Thank you very much. Kathy, I think we should have a test supposed to make, and there should be some written. And I just want to compliment the work you guys have done and just be aware of the fact that we have not done this on our own. This has been presented to the Santa Monica School District. So there has been some agreement that what we're doing here will work for both parties. And this presentation that we're doing here tonight, another version of this will be done for the residents of Santa Monica sometime in the future. So I just, you know, this is not like a one-sided program. This has been put together for a very long time, a lot of work, a lot of effort, but we think we've got agreement on both sides to make this work. So Hans, you're up. Let's hear it.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could ask Kathy, how did you get those estimates and how did you compute those and how much might they vary in the future?
Kathy, you understand the question?
Yeah.
Hans, sit down there. Yeah.
Those are sample numbers. Order of magnitude, will we be somewhere in that world, probably in that 16, 17 million world? The formula is created so that there's protections that follow the property tax distribution in Malibu. So if Malibu's share of the property taxes actually increases from one year to the next, the payment could be higher, but we'd have the revenue to support that. We'll talk about protections later on, but there are protections built in where we feel like it will be within our expectations. The amount of the payment will be within the expectations, and there's been a significant analysis to determine whether that payment level is affordable, given the budgetary constraints. And again, is it going to be a windfall for Malibu? No. But we are going to be able to at least sustain the programs we have today, and hopefully in the future, we'll be able to add in programs, but that won't happen immediately. The budget will be quite tight for a few years.
Anybody else?
I just have two questions. One is, I'm a little concerned on this base formula and the formula in general. I saw all of this about great concern about preserving the adequate funding to provide Santa Monica students the level of services and courses they have right now. I see almost no emphasis on ensuring that Malibu students have the same, even though it's more expensive. Secondly, why do we have to guarantee that they have 4% increased revenues per year? It's one thing to guarantee sort of an equivalent, but if nothing else, it should be tied to actual inflation, not a desired 4% growth. So those are my only two questions.
Thank you very much. Kathy, you want to take a shot at those? Is there anybody else?
I'm going to have Mike start.
Michael, yeah, there you go. I still think we should have had a written test. I do.
I know. And Mayor, you're first.
Be careful what you ask for.
There you go. I understand. All right, go ahead, Michael.
Hi, everybody.
Introduce yourself, Michael.
Yeah, I'm Mike Matthews, Malibu resident since 1993, when I became the first principal of Malibu High School. So, yeah. Wow, yeah. All right, so that's a great question because we are, it's a mutually, we're promising both the Santa Monica School District and the new Malibu School District, they will have sufficient funds to run their district and to keep all services for students at the same level that they are right now. So we have worked on a budget. We have some great finance people, Latonya and Kathy and Terry up north, who have been great with this, and I've dealt with a lot of school budgets over my time. We've actually put together some numbers for ourselves. We look at the numbers that are being spent on Malibu students right now. We have a similar budget built out. It is a significant amount that we are transferring in the revenue, in the property tax revenue.
Tax revenue sharing.
Tax revenue sharing agreement. It is significant, but what it does is it keeps both services the same, and we paid a lot of attention to making sure that Malibu students would get the services they need. I'll put one thing out there right now, maybe ahead of you, Kathy, but one of the big ideas out there is that the minute we do this, this could be a great thing for Malibu kids, and we can add all sorts of programs. That's not what it is. I mean, in the long run, probably so. We believe that will happen, but in the immediate run, there's a fixed budget, we're dividing it, both sides will have a high, maintain the level of services we're giving to students right now. So we're paying a lot of attention to those guarantees for both entities, and that's part of it. Kathy, want to add anything to that?
The 4% piece was a negotiation, and I got to tell you, in a negotiation, there's pain on both sides. And I think we would have rather had a lower number, but as we're going through and trying to get concessions on one side to provide protections for Malibu to make sure that this revenue sharing is affordable, and we got a lot of protections. We'll talk about that later. One of the things we did have to agree to was that 4% growth rate. It is based on the district's historical growth rate, their revenue growth rate, so that's what the basis of the 4% was. And they felt like in order for them to say to their community that they would not be harmed due to the separation, that's the level of funding that they would need to achieve. Christine, do you have anything else?
Yeah, I would add a couple of things about the 4% growth rate is, and I think Kathy mentioned this, she might have said it relatively quickly, if Santa Monica Unified is able to accomplish its 4% growth on its own, then there would be no property tax transfer from Malibu Unified. So that is, what we're only doing is acting as kind of an insurance policy based on their historical growth. It was historical growth that they would have had with us, and so we're just saying that we want to make sure they have that historical growth without us up to a certain point. But if they accomplish that through their own growth, then there would be no property tax transfer from Malibu, which is a significant concession also by Santa Monica.
Thank you, Christine. And if I had just, we're going to have some comment, but just, I mean, I think Mike Matthews summarized this agreement that said, what we've done is made sure that we keep Santa Monica School District whole, and we also keep Malibu School District whole. And I think that's the thing you got to take away from this thing, that we have, as much as all the numbers look like, whatever the numbers look like, the program here is to make sure that both parties are able to continue at doing the education process that they have to do, and at the same time, give the Malibu School District a chance to get built up so that we can deliver the educational alternatives we want for the Malibu children back here in the city. So I think they've done a great job. Paul, you had a comment. I didn't mean to cut you off earlier.
I was just going to go back to Hans's question about the source of the numbers that were used. And basically, the numbers that we plug into the formula come from the audited annual report, which the school is required by the state of California to file. So that's how we got the actual numbers they're using.
Joe, do you have a comment?
I came in late. Did you give the numbers on how much the Malibu School District is going to cost? Or did I miss that? And then is this, I know you said that the payments will stop when Santa Monica can fund themselves, but is there a stop date for us?
Yes. I think we're going to go through that in the next section. Is that not correct?
Yeah. So the question about what Malibu is going to cost, that is kind of a different concept. So what we're looking at today is simply this revenue sharing agreement, which is how we're going to allocate the revenues of the existing district. We aren't going into details about the kind of budgeting estimates and what the budget for Malibu would be. As far as the termination, we're going to go into a whole section on termination, so we'll get to you on that one.
And how much of the property tax that we do?
Can't, I can't hear that question, so I'll repeat it if I can hear it.
I can do it on the mic. She's asking, do we know how much in property tax revenue Malibu would get? At this point, it's about 40 million, a little bit more. That would escalate over time as the property tax base grows. So this separation, just in concept, isn't going to happen overnight, so we'll talk timing a little bit later. The reason we aren't giving concrete numbers, as Paul mentioned, is the formula is going to be based on the numbers that occurred in the year prior to separation. We don't know what that is yet, so all we can kind of provide are samples and estimates. Once we have the separation date, we'll have a better idea of what it is, but there are protections built into the formula to really prevent an unexpected payment level that just isn't affordable. So we'll talk again about the protections later, but it's about 40 million today. I don't know what it would be when we actually separate. I don't have a crystal ball yet.
Paul, you're up, then Mary Ann.
Kathy, can you just emphasize that the dollars, the property tax dollars that you talked about are money that is going for education right now? It's not money that comes to the city of Malibu at all.
Yes.
And currently, it goes to Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District, and they have control of how much comes to us.
And that's a great point. So we're not talking about new tax revenues. These are, this is part of the general 1% property taxes that every property owner pays within Malibu and Santa Monica. And we're talking about just the general property tax revenues. This isn't money that currently goes to the city. This is money that currently goes to Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District. So we're taking existing revenues and allocating between the two districts. So there's nothing, we're not talking about new revenues being generated, and there aren't, we don't anticipate new revenues being generated to fund the budget.
Mary Ann?
And I just want to comment about the team that is doing these budget estimates that we have. Kathy has years of experience in school funding. Latonya Kirk is a, please tell me, the CBO, that's what I?
Chief Business Official.
There we go. So she's worked with many districts and run their finances, so she's acutely aware of exactly what schools need. Dr. Matthews, again, superintendent of multiple school districts, so they all have this experience. So we're not just building budgets blind and willy-nilly coming up with what they think. They have practical experience in creating budgets, and I'll let Latonya speak a little bit more.
So just to answer the question just a little bit more, the 4% wasn't just pulled out of the air. It actually, yes, was their average amount of growth, but it took us a long time to get there because originally, Santa Monica School District wanted a permanent redistribution of the Malibu property tax to them. And so we had to go quite a bit of ways to get them to not look over the fence at how much money we would have per student when this ended, and only looked at what they actually needed to sustain their schools. And that's where the 4% came from. So it took us about a year and a half, maybe two, to get them to agree to not look over the fence at our students once we separated. And we don't look over the fence at them. So, and I'll elaborate a little bit more on what you said. So Mike Matthews, myself, and our other consultant have all worked in schools. I'm a retired chief business official. I retired from Beverly Hills Unified School District, but 32 years in nothing but school business. So we did come up with a sample budget. We're not ready to publish that, but what we looked at is what would we need in revenue to run a Malibu School District with the amount of students that we had? And we made sure that we would have enough revenue in our projections to run our own school district based upon what we have now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm getting signals from my team over here that says there's something I should be doing. What is it that you would like me to do that I'm not doing?
There's two raised hands in Zoom.
Ah, very good. Give me a Zoom person.
Alicia?
Alicia.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Awesome. So is it based on those charts, is it $600 the differential between Santa Monica and Malibu per pupil per year? Is that how I'm reading that?
Not exactly, and it's never that simple. So it is, it is actually, it is actually the difference between Santa Monica and Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District. So it's there, it's essentially how much less it would cost them to educate students as compared to the existing district, not compared to Malibu. In fact, if you were going to compare the Santa Monica numbers to Malibu, it would actually be much larger than $600. But the formula is based on Santa Monica Unified School District as compared to Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District, the existing district. So that's what that $600 represents. Hopefully, Alicia, that made sense?
Next call.
Okay. No.
Alicia, if you have more questions, I feel like I'm looking in the air like she's a god.
Alicia, go ahead.
If she's got more questions.
Alicia, still there?
Let her go.
Yeah, I'm here. I'm so sorry. Okay, can you say that one more? So it's the difference between what Santa Monica is going to pay versus what SMM USD paid?
So we're looking at revenues. So this is, this is revenues, not expenditures. But interestingly enough, in order to figure out what the per pupil cost differential was, we actually had to look at the expenditures of the schools within Santa Monica versus the schools in Malibu. But what this is actually representing is the difference in the amount of revenue that Santa Monica would need, the independent Santa Monica Unified School District would need, as compared to the revenue that the Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District, as it exists today, would need. So it's the difference between the combined district and Santa Monica. It's not comparing Malibu to Santa Monica. That actually would be a much larger number. The reason this makes sense in the context of the formula is the formula is looking at Santa Monica's cost. It's not accounting for this comparison of the two different cities. That help? Christine, maybe?
Anybody else? Who's next? We have another speaker?
Mark DiPaola.
Mark, you're on. Mark, you there?
Yes, hi, everybody.
Go ahead.
First of all, a quick thank you to everyone on the negotiating team. I guess a good negotiation is one where everyone feels like a little bit pushed over their comfort, and I certainly do, in looking at this. So a couple clarifying questions. One about that same $600, Alicia asked. $600 Alicia asked about. Is that a, that's a fixed number that's already been negotiated? Or that's based on a formula that's TBD?
It's a fixed number that's been negotiated, but we're actually pretty comfortable with that number. We've run it in different scenarios. And we want to lock in that number so that adjustments that the district makes to the future budget don't impact the calculation. We want to try to get as much locked in place as we can so that there's less uncertainty in what the formula derives later on.
Okay. And then a general question. My understanding is that this is, this whole deal now, at this point, is more or less locked on both sides, and that these calls are just to solicit, to kind of share them with the public, not really to solicit any changes because it's a bit too late for that. Is that right?
We've worked out an arrangement, but it has not been approved by the City Council.
Okay. Wasn't implying anything from there?
I don't want to get ahead of the council.
Yeah, I think what we've got is an agreement that was at least negotiated between us and Santa Monica. And I think there's been some acquiesces on both parties that think we've got something that we can all live with. There, like I said, there will be other meetings held here in Malibu and other meetings in Santa Monica to give everybody a view of this thing that we think we're close. Is that a fair assessment?
And I think what I would expect is the public is going to inform the council on your ultimate decision.
Right.
Paul has it.
Paul?
The last question is about the, oh, I'm sorry.
No, please go ahead.
I think someone had mentioned that the approximate property tax going to education from the Malibu taxpayer base is about 40 million, and that the the guesstimated, like, order of magnitude number in terms of that first year base payment to Santa Monica School District will be about 14 million. Do I have both those numbers right? So that's 14 of the 40 will go to Santa Monica. Is that about right?
The first numbers is right, is about right. We're expecting a little bit more, probably about 16 to 17 million. But again, it depends on on Malibu's share of the property tax base when we actually get to separation. But somewhere in that 16 to 17 million for now. That compared to the 40 is probably pretty realistic.
Paul, do you have a question?
Put it, put it.
Sir, please go ahead. If you've got more questions, go for it.
Just to confirm my understanding, so near, just under 50%, maybe somewhere in the realm of 40% plus of all Malibu property tax revenue would go to Santa Monica, at least in the in the base year. And then that would escalate depending on their need over the next 20, 20x years. Is that about right?
I was actually doing some generalities in the numbers. It's about, it's 38% is our number. And that 38% number is actually memorialized, and we'll talk about that later. It's actually memorialized in the agreement, where if it's larger than 38% of Malibu revenues, there would be a further conversation. So we're estimating about 38% of the revenues.
Okay. Thank you. And thanks again for all the work on
Just year one. And I'm, we're only talking about the base year. I do want to be really clear there, because I actually don't think that that's the same percentage moving forward.
Paul, you have a question? Comment?
Yeah. Mr. DiPaola had a, had a question basically about whether or not this is totally baked. And what what has gone on over the last two years is there have been various iterations of this that have come back to, from the group to the council, the council asked questions. We came up with negotiating things that went back and forth. Santa Monica did the same thing. And I would imagine that we, we believe we have all the questions that are going to be generated. But by all means, you should ask the questions because there's a good chance that we've missed something. So if if we get one that says we do not have, that causes people to go, you know, we never thought of that, and is that an issue? We want it. That's, that would be a valuable thing for us to have. If there are any, any things we have not considered, we'd really like to know what they are.
Okay, thank you. Bruce?
First of all,
I'm sorry.
Mary Ann, okay. I couldn't agree more with that. I mean, nothing's over till it's over. So we may hear something that is completely out of what we thought about. So might Santa Monica for that matter. But are we going to have an opportunity to make general comments? Or are we going to wait till this is over? Are we not going to do it at all?
Whatever, if you'd like to make comments at each section, we're more than happy to accommodate that. If you want to wait till the end, whatever works. I think this is a, an unstructured program. So I think we've got to make sure that everybody gets a chance to do what they think they have to do. So
If it's okay, I'd like to make some overarching comments.
Please do.
Which I think they're, they actually partially address a lot of the questions that have been asked, and they helped me frame what's going on and help me understand it and help me support it, actually. First of all, I would say, everyone who has worked so hard to get us to where we are right now has done an amazing job. I mean, the, the, our council, our consultants, our staff, and our ad hoc committee members, both present and former, they've done an amazing job. It's been a lot of work, and I think they've delivered something that's actually looks good right now. It's not ideal. You know, and I think that's what a lot of the questions are about. It's not ideal, but it's better than the status quo. And I think that's the big issue, is it's better, is it better than the status quo? Or is it worse than the status quo? It's clearly, it's, the questions have been asked about how these splits are going to be. It sounds so extreme. That's the split that's currently occurring, de facto. All the money goes to Santa Monica, Malibu. So if you think about it, all the money goes to the Santa Monica School Board. It's, they're predominantly Santa Monica. They control how the money gets spent. So all of the money is currently going into Santa Monica, and then it flows back to Malibu. Well, the part that flows back to Malibu is approximately the percentage that this is designed to protect coming back to Malibu. So it's the same. It sounds extreme, but it's what's going on right now. And it has an opportunity for it to be better. That's the key. So when I was at the, at the closed session meetings, the thing that was most important to me, I'm not going to say what I said at those meetings, but the things that have always been most important to me is two points. One, will whatever comes out of this be affordable to the Malibu School District that doesn't yet exist? Will they be able to provide the same or better education and other things to the Malibu students than is currently being provided to the Malibu students by the unified, the Santa Monica Malibu School District?
Yeah, yeah.
And I've been satisfied from hearing the experts and hearing our ad hoc committee members, because, you know, we have, the three of us who weren't on the committee have to trust what we're being told. We're not there, but we're given enough information that makes us comfortable that we're getting good answers. I'm satisfied having heard all the the give and take, and this is what the public education will be about, that we will be able to provide as good or better education on other services once this gets implemented than are being provided by Santa Monica, Malibu. The second question was, is it going to cost our residents any more than it currently costs our residents through their proportionate share of their tax dollars? We're going to have to impose some new tax? Is there going to be some new revenue that's going to be compulsory that we're going to have to derive from our residents? Because I, I didn't want to see that. I want to see that it's going to come out of the same place. And the answer is yes, it is. I mean, nothing's guaranteed, but this is designed to provide as good or better an education to our students without it costing anyone in this room or anyone in Malibu an additional penny than what they're currently providing through their property taxes. Those were my two overriding points that I wanted to test whenever we met. And I'm satisfied those are both the case. So right now, we're wedded. All of our funds go to Santa Monica, Malibu, Santa Monica, Malibu. But again, Santa Monica decides what to do with them. This agreement provides, if it's, if it, if it comes to pass, a number of years where it's probably going to be the same thing that's currently happening, except we'll have our own school board, and we'll have independent determinations about what should happen here. But the money's going to be pretty much the same. Don't expect anything, if this, once this gets approved, if it gets approved, to happen overnight. It may be a decade. It may be 20 years before there's a dramatic difference. We're hopeful it'll be an incremental benefit over the years, actually, hope upon hope that it'll be a substantial benefit over the years. And it could be. But then there'll eventually be a point where the divorce is final, the child support, child support is actually a good way to think of it. The child support will end, will end, because the child will grow up in Santa Monica. And at that point forward, 100% of the Malibu revenue stays in Malibu. That'll be a, just as we're concerned about there not being a cliff, that'll be a giant rise for Malibu at that point. Of course, again, anything can happen between now and then. The last overarching point I'll make is there's, there's still a lot of risk. There's, there's closing risk, and that's where it comes to, you know, people ask, is this fully baked already? By no means is this fully baked already. It's been negotiated as best it can be negotiated by people who don't have authority. So we're having public hearings. We're going to have to make a vote. The Santa Monica School Board, I think it is going to have to have a vote. There's going to have to be a resident vote at some point. It's unclear right now what residents will vote. But so there could be a failure of an approval at the various organizational levels. There could be a failure of approval at the resident level. There's state approval that's going to be required. And things can happen between now and when all of that happens, assuming it's even moving in the right direction. Could be an earthquake, giant earthquake. Who knows? There's all kinds of risks. So nothing's a done deal till it's a done deal. And there is financial risk, although we believe it's affordable, and although we believe it won't cost us any more money to make it, to keep it affordable. There's no guarantee that's the case. But they're going to be talking as the night goes on about the protections that are built into the agreement that are intended to deal with what we can foresee as the possible problems that will cause it to become a problem. So those are, again, not ideal, better than what we have now. And if all goes well, if all goes as we currently believe it will, based on the best information we have, at some point in the distant future, but not so far out that you can't see it, it'll be a dramatic difference. It'll be Malibu tax dollars entirely going to Malibu School District to fund the best school district Malibu can possibly have for its students. So those are my general comments. And I think that answers a lot of the questions that have been asked as well.
Thank you, Bruce. Getting an assessment from a lawyer is always
Let's hear from our lawyer.
Warming, yes, go ahead. Christine, please.
Thank you, Councilmember Silverstein. I just wanted to, before we go into the next part, I know it's exciting, and I'm really glad that we have all these questions. I wanted to put a couple of things into context, and really provide a perspective to how the negotiations have gone. It's important to recognize that the, some of the stuff that Councilmember Silverstein mentioned in terms of our ability to look at affordability and our ability to know whether or not it will cost residents more, a lot of that has really required us to work in such collaboration with the Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District's board and staff. They've been really incredible during this process. As someone, I've been doing this now for six years on behalf of the city, but I know there's a lot of residents even here who's been, who've been doing this a lot longer. But for the first time, in, in, you know, for the last couple of years, for the first time, we have felt a certain collaboration and camaraderie with the Santa Monica Unified School District around the sharing of information, the sharing of resources. They've made their staff available to us. So our team has been able to build a budget based on real data. We've been able to utilize, you know, aggregate data around special ed costs. We've been able to use real data around operational costs for the city of Malibu, school site costs, our, our labor costs. We've been able to really look at true numbers and build a budget based on that. And all of that is really, can be attributed to the school separation committee at Santa Monica, as well as their staff, their superintendent. It's been a real exceptional partnership. So it's important to know that they've been a partner through this process with us. And it, that is what has allowed us to create the kind of projections and forecasting that our team has been able to do. So again, the other thing that that Latonya didn't mention in terms of the expertise of our team, remember, I think Kathy mentioned this, but both school districts at separation will be basic aid, which is a very unique concept in California school finance. And Latonya brings to the team expertise, having been at Beverly Hills, as one of the only other, I think it is the only other school district in the Los Angeles County that is basic aid. And so she provides us a great deal of understanding and analysis around how basic aid school districts operate. Because as you can see, I mean, I'm a deputy city attorney, although I do some schoolwork. But, you know, we are a city. And so we've had to really create a team of educational experts to help us build the projections and build the understanding that we need to be able to make the informed estimations that Councilmember Silverstein mentioned. So I wanted to put that in context as we go to our next part, where we go from the base year formula, and we start to look at what the annual calculations will be.
I'm back.
Do we have, I was going to say, it looks like another Zoomer?
Yeah, from Nick Hardy.
Nick, you there?
Hey. Fuck this shit. This shit is so fucking gay. This shit was so fucking boring.
All right. Please, let's stop that one and move on. Mary Ann, you got some?
I'll wait. Thank you.
Okay. Please
We'll go back to the presentation, and we'll talk about the annual calculation.
This is the second, the second
We're talking now in the second part. So you remember, base year calculation is calculated exactly once. The annual calculation is the calculation that is done in every other year besides the base year until the termination date. We'll talk about the termination in a little bit. But do you, as everybody remember, in the base year calculation, I'm going to go back, we established a funding target. And the sample number here is showing this funding target of 145 million. Again, we don't know that that's actually going to be the number, but it gives us an idea. It's that number that has escalated at 4% moving forward. And in the annual calculation, there's a comparison of the actual unrestricted revenues of Santa Monica Unified School District compared to that funding target to determine whether a shortfall exists. And the formula is actually pretty simple when we're looking at it. We're just taking that funding target, we're escalating it by 4%. So you're multiplying it by 104%. You're subtracting out the Santa Monica Unified School District, so their future district's unrestricted revenues, based on their unaudited actual financial statements, where they're not making up numbers. It's based on these existing documents. And that determines the property tax transfer amount. If the revenue in their natural revenue growth exceeds the funding target, Malibu would not make a payment. So that 4% number, I want to be very clear, is not an increase in 4% on our payment, on our property tax transfer amount. That escalation is based on the revenues, the target revenues of Santa Monica Unified School District. So that target revenue amount, if they hit it on their own, if their property tax base grows enough to achieve that in combination with their other revenue sources, and I'll talk about what those are in a moment, then Malibu would not make a payment, or Malibu would make a reduced payment if, if they hit maybe just under that 4%. So there are, there are benefits to the agreement. And again, we talked about protections. There's protection so that that, that 4% target is all we are responsible for guaranteeing. If they happen to exceed that, then, then great, and they won't need our funding. I talked about the revenue sources, and I do want to point this out before we pause on the annual calculation. What we look at are the total revenues of, of Santa Monica. So that includes for them, on the Malibu side, we really have two main revenue sources. We have property taxes, and we have parcel taxes, which is another form of property taxes. On the Santa Monica side, they have property taxes, the general property taxes. They have parcel taxes, but they have other local revenues as well. They get a share of the sales tax from the city. They have joint use payments that are somewhat substantial from the city of Santa Monica. They have lease payments that they receive, also over from the city. They also are part of a redevelopment agency. So the city of Santa Monica had, everybody's going to tell me redevelopment doesn't exist anymore. Well, it doesn't. But the obligations of the former redevelopment agencies still exist. So when redevelopment went into play, went into place, the tax base was frozen. And any additional increases in the tax base from all those redevelopment activities, all the property tax revenue from that was, was diverted to a redevelopment agency. And they have debts and obligations that they fund out of that property tax revenue. But because local agencies still are obligated to serve these growing communities, legally, a portion of the revenue comes to these other agencies in what's called a pass-through payment. And Santa Monica receives these pass-through payments, and it's part of, some of that money is part of their general operating funds. So those are included. I'm bringing up redevelopment because when we talk about termination, that's going to become an important point. But I want to make a point of also, so you understand, there are more revenues on the Santa Monica side than just general property taxes. So we're trying to hit that 4% growth. We're not just looking at growth in their property tax base. We are also looking at growth in those other local revenues. So it's their combined unrestricted general fund revenues that we're talking about. And so with that, I am going to pause, and Alexis is leaving.
No, that's fine.
Okay, I'm going to pause for, have our next component of the discussion.
So at this point, we're
Christine, go ahead.
At this point, we're willing At this point, we're willing to entertain questions on the part dealing with the annual revenue sharing calculation. Are there any questions from the council chambers?
Anybody? No?
Kevin.
Anybody who would like to get involved in trying to figure this stuff out? Let me get, you get an idea of how complex this process has been. So anybody who wants to raise their hands and get involved with the number process, let me know. We'll hook you up with Kathy, and she can use some additional help. Kevin, go ahead.
So two revenue sources come to mind in Santa Monica, and maybe it's because I have to live that over the last nearly a decade. One is, as I understand it, the elimination of the joint use agreement in Santa Monica is very likely. I see that in, in one of the examples. So, you know, that's something to perhaps consider. And perhaps this may even incentivize the City of Santa Monica to, to end that joint use agreement because then Malibu kicks in more to, you know, to counter that loss. And the second, and I just had, this is more of a question. Santa Monica also passed by a ballot measure in 2022, a transfer tax on real property of all, all properties exceeding $8 million. And it's a substantial sum of money when a property is sold for more than $8 million. Is that included in the base year revenue? Perhaps I missed it. And is that included as that likely increases as more and more $8-plus-million-dollar transactions occur?
Kathy, can you respond to any of those?
I can, and I'm actually gonna defer a little bit because we talked about some of the protections. The protections directly address some of these questions.
Okay, cool.
Can you explain what the joint use thing and what the transfer tax is?
So the joint use...
Repeat the question, please.
The question is, what, what is the joint use and what's the transfer tax? So the City of Santa Monica and the school district have come to an agreement related to the use of facilities. And their agreement results in the City of Santa Monica paying the school district for availability and availability to use school facilities. So that is, it's about $10 million per year that we're talking about. So it's, it's a substantial amount of money. That is unrestricted money to the school district. It's used for general operations. So that's the joint use. That's the one I actually would like to defer, and I have a specific answer for your question, but it's part of some of the protections in the, in the agreement. The second question is related to Measure GS, or is it GSH? GS, thank you. I'm sorry, the letters are just all blending in my head. So recently, in 2022, the City of Santa Monica put a measure on the ballot to, and Christine, you might have to explain exactly what this is. When there's a transfer of high-value properties, the city receives a portion, or receives a tax revenue. And I believe there was a legal challenge related to it. So it's kind of putting that revenue source in question as to whether the district would receive it. Is anybody else more familiar than I am on the details? Kevin, you need to get the mic.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
So real quick, as I understand it, that legal challenge was unsuccessful. I don't know if there's an appeal or not, but it seems likely that that transfer tax will survive. It's also similar to Measure ULA in Los Angeles that passed at the same time. And as I understand it, that has also survived legal challenges.
And we had wanted to do that here too, but we were told we couldn't because we're not a charter city.
Okay, another story.
And Beyonce property would have gotten us a lot of money.
Yes, so there's actually specific language written into that measure that restricts the ability for, if, as Santa Monica, the city pays the, the school district a share of that, there's restrictions on the school district's ability to use that outside of Santa Monica. During our negotiation, we, that is a revenue source that actually is specifically excluded from the analysis of Santa Monica revenues. It didn't exist at the time we negotiated it. And so we have a scheduled list of revenues. It is only those revenues that would apply to the unrestricted revenue category that you see in the formula. With a little exception that I'm gonna pause on in the protections, because again, nothing's ever that simple. So it isn't, it is not included in the revenue numbers that we're talking about.
Does that respond to your question? Okay, very good.
Any other comments just on the annual?
Kathy, thank you for any...
We, we have two on Zoom.
All right, we've got, let me get some comments here from the... Jane, go ahead. And Mike, you have a comment? Oh, okay.
First of all, thank you for both the answers of the team that's negotiating and the city council on the questions on the base. I thought that was very helpful. But I will reiterate, because it came up in annual as well, I was reassured by what you said, Mr. Matthews and others, that the, the concerns about providing equal opportunity, equal resources for students in Malibu was on your minds. But if it's not at all reflected in the documents, if, if it's not a goal to provide Malibu students, not just Santa Monica students, the same level of funding, I think that can become a problem over time. So I would encourage you, if there's any ability to tweak documents in the future, to get the goal to keep those resources good for both Malibu and Santa Monica students. Secondly, if there's any ability going forward to build in at least language that reflects more reciprocity, we're in a situation where basically the small player is guaranteeing the large player their 4% increase. And yet, that 4% increase is apparently based on the fact that the SMMUSD enjoyed, on average, this kind of increase. Well, when Malibu was part of that group, we, in principle, had a 4% increase as well. But I see in the annual thing, if there's a, if they reach their 4% increase without it, then, well, we don't have to transfer money. Well, how about ensuring that we have a 4% increase too? And that they would have to give some of our tax dollars back to us at that point? So I would just, I would, I realize it's hard. I realize these negotiations have been hard. But to the extent you can build in reciprocal principles, I think that without requiring Santa Monica to give us anything, unless they do really well, and then, then we need it. But Santa Monica, as you know, has a much larger tax base. It's got a much larger residential tax base, and they're gonna build a lot more and more than we ever could. They've got a much larger commercial base. And I do worry about the fact that, that we're gonna end up with much less money than we think we're gonna get. And we're gonna be in a difficult situation of, of not having enough money for our schools and students, and yet subsidizing their schools and students. And that is, that is all. Thank you.
Jane, thank you. Anybody else on your council side?
Or are we gonna do the people online?
I think it's important to kind of maybe address, I, I don't want to call you Jane because I don't know you, but I, that's the only name I have. Is it Jane, right?
Jane Albright, yes.
Oh, Ms. Albright, thank you. I wanted to be able to address that, and I, I put it on the screen so that you could understand that the guiding principle throughout the entire negotiation is that each agency after separation, the Malibu Unified School District and the Santa Monica Unified School District, would have enough funding to provide a similar level of service at each school site as prior to separation. So over the last, I mean, because we've been negotiating for, you know, more than two years. And what we've been doing is stress testing these numbers so that we understand, based on our budget, based on revenues and historical, historical trends, what we would need to operate to at least provide the current levels of service at Malibu. And so that, that has not only been a significant consideration, obviously, for Malibu and the Malibu consultants, but it's also been a very, it's been a huge consideration for Santa Monica. It, it actually was part of what made our original negotiations really hard because they didn't anticipate that we would have enough to satisfy budgets based on their estimation. So that has been a real core concern for everyone involved. Not, what you see in the revenue sharing agreement, though, is, is the fact that as Malibu separates, there is a concern that we would take more revenue out of the to-be-created Santa Monica Unified School District than would allow them to have similar levels of service. And so the agreement that we're describing today is really an agreement that's designed to allow for separation and, and presents an opportunity for Malibu to backfill any loss that Santa Monica may have based on that 4% historical growth trend. Again, if that growth trend is accomplished without, if Santa Monica accomplishes that growth trend on its own, then there's no payment from the Malibu Unified School District. So in that way, it allows for both, for both entities to operate independently. But it also allows for there to be a little bit of a, a stopgap to the new Santa Monica Unified School District if Malibu has to provide that. But that's only, and, and the protections that Kathy talks about allow for there to be affordability measures, protections built in, and she will talk about that. But it's never not been a consideration that Malibu would be able to operate and at least operate at its current level of service.
Oh, you wanna go first? Doug, go ahead, please.
Let me make a couple of quick comments. I think Bruce did a nice job of outlining what we've been talking about at the council level. And to just reiterate what we've been doing, the council has been performing a role as a, call it a synthetic school board. We've been negotiating this on behalf of the population of the Malibu, eventual Malibu Unified School District. So we've had a very vested interest in this. And as Bruce mentioned, there's a huge thank you, not only to our excellent staff that's been here, and think of this as our, our school board staff. We've also had the prior negotiators. We've had Karen Fair and Mikey Pearson for four years, and then Mary Ann and Paul these last two years. This has been a diligent effort of the council. And I would ask that we get all the way through this before you have any negative concerns because there's a lot of things that are about to come up, I think, about the protections and recovery. But one comment that Jane made, I want to, I want to emphasize. She had an excellent point, and I don't realize, I don't think she realized how important it is. You made the comment that Santa Monica has a potential for a lot more growth of its properties. With growth comes higher revenue. The last few years, and I'm not gonna quote the number, if you look at the taxes, people can go to the Tax Assessor's numbers, for the amount of growth in tax revenue for Malibu and Santa Monica over the last few years has been greater than 4%. And we are going to benefit from that. Bruce was more, less, less optimistic than I am in looking at the modeling, which by the way, has been very diligent. There is a huge amount of work has been done in modeling for this. And as you look at the potential growth in revenues, the school districts, both school districts, do better. And what we're doing in this is not necessarily sacrificing Malibu. We're not sacrificing it all. What we're doing is saying that the growth that had been going to Santa Monica is now being kept in Malibu. And that's where the benefit is. And maybe the first year or two, it's the same budget that we had in the past. But you should see the beginnings of, of a more robust budget for our school kids and our per, per student. And the Santa Monica district will equally have that. There is a lot of potential growth here. And it, it, it has the benefit for our school kids, especially at this level of enrollment, and even if it grows. We already have much of the superstructure or asset structure here. We've got a high school, we've got, it's being built. We've got new school buildings, we've got the existing buildings. There's a lot of things already in place that we don't have to add. It's about adding teachers and staffing levels and spending money on the programs that we think are important to the kids. So go all the way through the presentation. Let's make sure that you see all the answers because many of the things that have been brought up in the comments and questions so far are actually addressed a little bit later on.
Okay, thank you. Bruce?
Just a short quick, and address to Jane also, the, the comments you're making are spot on. I mean, you know, we, we are the smaller city. Our revenues are less, and we are guaranteeing an increase there. And all things being equal, if we had our druthers, we wouldn't be giving them anything. We would just be dividing, right? But they have the whip hand, right? We don't get to divide until we reach agreement, and it's all, it's been a negotiation. So right now, every dollar, again, every, every dollar that goes to education goes to the Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District, and it gets decided by a board that is the majority, Santa Monica, how it gets spent. If there's a shortfall in Santa Monica, it doesn't come to Malibu. It just gets spent there anyway. This is a contractual way to ensure that it gets divided fairly to Santa, to Malibu, at least no less unfairly than it currently is going forward, with opportunity for it to become more and more fair to Malibu, to the point eventually where there's a complete separation. So would we like more? Absolutely. Would they want more? Absolutely. They don't even want to separate. So this was the cost of being able to do it. And again, driving, driving principles. We get the same or better education. If we don't get the same or better education, I wouldn't be supporting this. And it doesn't cost you all any more money. If it was costing you all money, I'm not sure where I would come out on that. But it's the same, so it's the same dollars, it's the same education, and it's an opportunity for a better education, incrementally better over time, and eventually dramatically better.
Any comments on this side? Mary Ann, Paul? Zoom, folks.
There's one raised hand from Mark.
That, that was Mark who we cut off earlier, wasn't it?
Hey, guys, it's Mark Kelly. I just have a quick question. Why are all those niggers so gay?
Close that little sucker down also, please. Anybody else? Kathy, I apologize. This is not exactly what we...
Or what you want to hear. So let's go to agreement termination. We've alluded to this a couple of times. But now I think we want to just explain it. And again, the reason we're breaking this into pieces is nothing's that simple. So there are a couple of provisions for termination. One clause is related to early termination. If we run through that annual formula and the calculated property tax transfer amount is $0, so meaning Malibu does not make a payment to Santa Monica, Malibu Unified doesn't make a payment to Santa Monica Unified, for three consecutive years, the agreement terminates. And that's it, that we don't run through any more calculations. So that's, that's one. And when could that happen? Well, if Santa Monica's tax base grows by, I don't know, 8% a year, I'm guessing they'll hit their 4% unrestricted revenue growth model. And as a result, we won't be making payments, and their property tax base is gonna continue to grow three years in a row if we don't make payments. The agreement simply terminates, and we are two separate entities not sharing revenues. That's number one. Then we get into a little bit more complicated termination provisions. So we, again, every year, we run through that annual calculation. If we run through the calculation and there is no property tax transfer amount in 2041, '42, the agreement terminates. Well, why did we wave a magic wand and pick 41, '42? I mentioned a little while ago that there's a redevelopment agency in Santa Monica. And I also said that redevelopment agencies don't exist, but the obligations of the redevelopment agencies do still exist. Well, the Santa Monica Redevelopment Agency's obligations terminate in 41, 2041, '42. At that point in time, right now, they are paying, that was called a pass-through payment, to the school district. That pass-through payment would go away. But all of the property tax revenue from that redevelopment agency actually goes back into the general 1% property taxes and is distributed to all the taxing agencies, including the Santa Monica School District. So they will receive a bump in property taxes. So when we run through that calculation, we, we have a reasonable expectation that that tax base will be enough to essentially terminate the agreement. And it, there would be a zero property tax transfer amount calculated due to the fact that there are substantial, a substantial increase in property tax revenue in that year due to the termination of the redevelopment agency. 2041, '42 is a year written in the contract. It's not based on when the contract starts or when the, the separation occurs. 21, 2041, '42 is the date. So if we don't end up starting the separation till, I don't know, 2031, '32, it's only a 10-year agreement. Just kind of keep that in mind. That is a, that is a hard date. But, I keep doing that, don't I? But if in that year, when, in 2041, '42, we run through that annual calculation and the property tax transfer amount is basically less than $5 million, but greater than 0, then, and you remember, one of their goals was to not have a cliff. They didn't want a payment cliff. If we're still making a payment to them in 2041, '42, we will taper off that payment over the next five years. And by 45, 2046, '47, the agreement will terminate. So each year, we will continue to run through the calculation. If the calculation generates, let's say, a $5 million payment in the first year, we would pay that full $5 million payment. In the second year, we run through the calculation and... In the second year, we run through the calculation, and we figure out what the payment is, we would pay 80% of the payment amount. In the third year, we would pay 60% of the payment amount, then 40%, then 20%, until our payment is 0 over five years. Okay? And no matter what, that agreement would terminate in 2046-47. But let's say we were way off, and redevelopment didn't generate any additional property tax revenue. And the property tax transfer amount is 5 million or more in 2041-42. Then we do this tapering off, but over a 10-year period. No matter what, the agreement terminates in 2051-52. So we were able to achieve one of our goals, which is that there's a termination date to this agreement. And again, I think Christine mentioned, this agreement was originally, sorry, not the agreement, the district's position originally was to look at a permanent redistribution of the tax base. So one of the things that we feel pretty happy about in negotiation is this termination date, so that at that point, both districts would be independent. I'm going to pause again.
Good. Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Questions? Anybody? Comments from up here? Anybody?
We do not have Zoom questions, and it looks like we don't have questions.
No Zoomers?
No.
Good.
Oh, we do. Ms. Albright? Oh, please.
My only question now is, have you guys, I'm sure you guys have thought about it, but how much fun and games can be played with these budget numbers? We all know how the movie industry thinks it. So yeah, that's my question is...
You've been hanging around the movie industry for too long.
What kind of, how clear and solid are going to be these budget calculations?
Yeah, you've been hanging around the movie industry for too long.
I have an answer for your question, but it's on the next slide. So I'm going to pause on that one.
Okay.
I'm sorry I'm doing that for everybody, but I want to do my best.
Any Zoomers? No Zoomers? No questions there? Kathy, you're doing a hell of a job, so thank you.
Should we keep going?
You're doing good.
Do I miss somebody?
I was just going to say that was actually a key issue for us, and it's going to be explained, but that was a key issue for us as well.
Anybody else up here? No? Please continue.
So now let's talk about those protections that I've been alluding to. But we kind of needed to walk through all the concepts before the protections made any sense. So there are protections built into the agreement. There is contingency language related to whether there'd be undue fiscal pressure on Malibu Unified School District. So there's contingency language included where the JPA, that Joint Powers Authority, we haven't written that agreement yet, but this JPA is going to have some power, where they would consider adjustments to the formula or payment if Malibu's property tax transfer amount results in undue fiscal pressure on Malibu Unified School District. And we've categorized that in one of two ways. In that initial base year, I mentioned, somebody's comment was about the percentage of the budget. And we've memorialized in the agreement that in that first year, in that base year, if the property tax transfer amount is more than 38% of Malibu Unified's unrestricted revenues, that that would trigger this contingency language. On an annual basis, so we put the base year away, but now we're on an annual basis, if the increase in payment from one year to the next exceeds $675,000, then it would also trigger this contingency language. So that's how we want to try to manage the affordability. So in the future, we're expecting that that 38% becomes a smaller share of the Malibu Unified School District's budget, which frees up additional revenues in the future to start adding programs. And we've said over and over again, we don't expect that right up front. But as that share of the revenues is decreasing from that initial 38%, that would free up additional funds and enable not only for the district to build reserves, but also free up money to reinvest in programs for students. All the while, you still have your local control on how to spend the money you have. So that's a very important protection. The second is, and this was to answer somebody else's question that came up about a loss of one or more other local revenues. So if, and I mentioned, when we're looking at Santa Monica's revenues, there's not just property taxes, but also these other local revenues, such as the sales tax money that comes from the city, joint use money that comes from the city, lease payments that come from the city. If there is a loss of one or more of the other local revenue sources, there's a proportionate share in the loss. And when we talk about proportion, the proportion of student enrollment is memorialized in the agreement, is 12% of the loss would be absorbed by Malibu, but the remaining 88% would be absorbed by Santa Monica. So Malibu is not making up 100% of the loss, which eliminates that motivation for Santa Monica to try to just terminate that agreement. So I just want to be clear, we would still have a share of the loss, about 12% of the loss, but we wouldn't be absorbing 100% of the loss. If we were still together, we would be part of that overall district, and we would also be sharing in that loss. So that's the concept on that protection. There's another kind of nuanced protection that is important, but it may be lost because it's kind of buried in the numbers. In the base year calculation, the Santa Monica enrollment is an important part of the math problem, because we're calculating the funding on a per pupil basis. One of the things we were concerned about is there would be spikes or changes in enrollment from one year to the next. And when we established this agreement, the percentage was, 12% of the enrollment was from Malibu, 88% was from Santa Monica. If there are huge fluctuations in that, it really does change that base year number. Once that base year is established, it really sets the line, that 4% growth line. So we didn't want a lot of fluctuations in that first year number, because it could provide some unexpected costs that can't be absorbed in the budget from an affordability perspective. So this is a great benefit to Malibu. And again, it's hard to explain because it's kind of buried in that formula, but the percentage enrollment in the base year, so Santa Monica's percentage enrollment in the base year is capped at 88%. So even if Malibu's enrollment plummets as a share of the district overall, we wouldn't have a spike in our payment in that first year. So I, kind of giving that as a protection, and it's hard to really explain it because it's buried in those numbers, but it is an important piece. And I'm going to go back real fast just to the spreadsheet. Where that comes in is the second to last line. It says SMUSD-computed enrollment, because that number is actually computed. And if the percentage of actual enrollment is, say, 90% at Santa Monica, it would still, it would be capped at 88%. And so it's a computed number, not an actual enrollment number. Does that make sense to everyone? Okay. I know that one's a little complicated, but it's a big protection for Malibu. Another one is that the property tax revenues of each district will be independently calculated by the Los Angeles County Auditor Controller's Office. We really made an effort to make sure that we had independent sources to tie these numbers so that we're not just relying on district personnel or even Malibu future personnel. So this is something that we've gotten the County Auditor Controller's Office to agree to, that they will annually calculate, they will handle it for the base year, and they will annually calculate the property tax revenues and provide us with those numbers for the formula. If there is a significant change in reported revenues, and I think this goes back to the question you just asked about what happens if there's some odd accounting that happens, if we see something happening where there's a significant change in reported revenues, there are provisions in the agreement for an independent financial professional to review Santa Monica's revenues to ensure that the accounting of them is in line with the intent of the revenue sharing agreement. So for example, if they've, and this is done, it's not nefarious, but if money is moved out of the general fund into a reserve fund of some type, but we had previously been accounting for that money as part of the calculation, this independent financial professional will be able to say, no, that money, even though it's in Fund 17, it actually is part of the general fund calculation. So we wanted to make sure that just simple accounting wasn't going to unexpectedly change what the property tax transfer would be. And then there is further dispute resolution language with a process for challenging that ongoing annual calculation. So if we run through all these things and we still have a concern, there's dispute resolution language that's included in the agreement. I'm not going to pause just yet. I'm going to go to protections for Santa Monica, and then I'll pause. For Santa Monica, they of course have protections as well. They're getting that guaranteed unrestricted general fund revenue growth of 4% per year. They have contingency language as well. So I mentioned our contingency language related to the base year is that our payment won't exceed 38%. And then on an ongoing basis, on a year-to-year basis, we're looking at, if the payment increases by more than $675,000 a year, then the JPA takes a look at it. They also have protections in there, where if that property tax transfer amount from Malibu to Santa Monica results in per pupil funding increase of less than 2%. So I mentioned, on an annual basis, it's all based on that target funding amount that we're increasing at 4%. If you translate that, so if you divide that by the number of students in Santa Monica, and you compare the current year to the prior year on a per student basis, if it's less than 2% growth, the JPA would also take a look at whether that's, whether there needs to be an adjustment to the formula. What would cause something like that? Well, is there a private school or a charter school that closes within Santa Monica, and they get this huge influx of students? That's something that could trigger it. And then the JPA will evaluate whether this distribution is fair. And if the district was still together, we would all share in that additional cost. How do we look at it in this situation? So that's another protection for Santa Monica. The property tax transfer payments are going to be paid in alignment with the normal county property tax distributions each year and come directly from the county. That's something important for Santa Monica. They didn't want Malibu to be writing a check throughout the year. So the county, we've agreed with the county that we provide them with the calculation, basically in October of every year. And if we are able to do that, they are then able to include the property tax transfer payment directly to Santa Monica as part of their general property tax allocation. Another protection for them, and we've talked about this a little bit, is we've defined all of the revenues that are included in what makes up Santa Monica's share of revenues. If new revenue sources are created by the district, let's say they go to their voters and they get a new parcel tax. We still have their existing parcel tax that's on the tax roll, but they ask their voters to support additional revenues to the district. That would be to their benefit only. That wouldn't be something that Malibu would share in. Likewise, though, if we have a foundation that raises revenues, they're not looking over the fence and sharing in our revenues. So this was a way to kind of keep us from looking over the fence. And, but this would mean that that new revenue isn't replacement revenue. I mentioned previously one of the protections. Did I skip that one? Did I skip where the replacement revenue is? Did I talk about replacement revenue? Okay. So this is, for Malibu, if, I'm going to take a step back. So for Malibu, if there's a revenue source, one of the other local revenues goes away, we share in that loss. But what I didn't say, what I should have said is, but if Santa Monica identifies a replacement revenue source, we would receive the benefit of that replacement revenue source up to the amount we were previously receiving. So that way, they can't, we're just making sure that they aren't just eliminating a revenue source and then just getting a replacement revenue source and receiving 100% of the benefit of it. So that was a benefit to Malibu. I'm sorry, I missed that one. But on the Santa Monica side, new revenue sources that they're able to get on their own from their own community, they receive the benefit from, and it's not part of the formula. They also receive benefit from the dispute resolution language, so that's also included here. So I hope I didn't confuse everybody by that omission.
You did good.
Actually, I think the one thing you didn't answer, and I know you know it, is what's the protection against manipulations? Because we looked at different revenue streams, and they're not manipulable for the most part. Can you explain that?
Yeah, and that's where we have the independent financial professional that is specifically written into the language so that we can raise a concern, Malibu can raise a concern, and the independent financial professional actually looks at all of the revenue sources and makes sure that they are accounted for the way that they were intended to be accounted for in the RSA. So if, in the future, a Santa Monica businessperson decides that they're going to account for a revenue source and move it over to, say, another fund, like a reserve fund, it would still be part of the calculation if it was originally intended to be part of the calculation.
Yeah, what I was thinking of was, I remember we asked, the revenue sources are pretty much, leaving aside they can be ordered, they're not the kinds of things that can be manipulated.
And that's a really good point as well. And Latonya, actually, you should speak to that.
Yes. So the way that school fund accounting works, each form of revenue or stream of revenue is assigned to a resource code. And it's designed that way so that the state, so that a district can't blow its money. So if you get a, they can't, there's no way to, for example, get a local revenue stream. Even if it's a local revenue stream, there's a resource code assigned to that. The protection comes if they take some of that money from that resource code and put it into another fund. So their general fund or unrestricted money is Fund 01. Let's just say they get some local revenue, and they said, we want to put it in Fund 71, which is their retirement fund. We, the independent professional will see, well, no, you got X dollars in that resource code. You can't, neither one of us can game the system and take that money and put it somewhere else where it can be hidden in the budget. And if you follow school accounting back to when school districts were going under, that was when that protection came into the state of California, that all resources are coded so that you can find it in the budget. It can't be hidden. Did that answer the question?
Well, thank you. Doug?
If I could just put a point, don't leave. I want you to clarify something for everybody. My view on the accounting that you have to do in the school system is the equivalent of preparing your taxes. There's a line item for every item. This is not done on QuickBooks, and there is basically, for instance, in businesses, generally accepted accounting principles, which you have here is generally accepted school finance principles, correct?
Yes, it's called standardized accounting code structure, and it's voluminous. It's, I think it's even more than doing your taxes. But there's probably close to 400 revenue streams. The budget is probably, my budget was probably 7,000 expenditure streams, so, but each one is tracked. And they, the state brought that into effect so that districts who were doing bad accounting or fudging accounting or saying that I got, I'm going to get this much money, the state will know that you're not getting it or you're getting it. So it is, all school districts are the exact same. No, everybody's resource is the same. Their resource codes for their revenue.
And what you were, what I was getting you to say, and you said it nicely, this is, in effect, standardized accounting. You don't have the ability to necessarily cook your books. You may have the ability to shuffle money around, and that's what the independent reviewer would find if the money was miscaterporized. And we're only talking about income here in this analysis. How they spend it is up to Santa Monica.
Right.
Income is everything we're talking about. And I think the phrase has been used a couple of times is, it's alimony and child support. And I characterize it as when the earnings rise to a level that you no longer have the alimony and child support payments, they stop. One last thing, and maybe you're going to say it in a few minutes. Can you talk about the structure of this independent advisory panel? Maybe that's Kathy does it. But we've talked about having it be reviewed or the arbitration being overseen by the panel. So if you could just mention that, or maybe it's on your...
You're talking about the joint power? Joint Powers Agreement?
Right. And that, that structure is not foreign to Los Angeles County. We actually adopted it from another school district that separated, and the county, Los Angeles County Office of Education, so when I'm saying the county, I mean Laco, the education portion of the county. They, those districts that separated created a joint powers authority. So for that very reason, and it had to do with taxes, in their situation, it was more general obligation bond taxes that one district would receive and another district was guaranteed. But what we did was take that model, and we're creating, we haven't created it yet, a joint powers authority that actually has the authority to look at both districts' budgets, both districts' revenues, and if there is a problem, they can arbitrate it there. If it isn't arbitrated there, we think you guys are gaming us, or they think we're gaming them. The independent financial professional that has school experience will come, will be brought in to arbitrate where the money, if the money was something that was new or old, or replacement or not replacement like that. We actually had a, well, I won't say what me and Carl talked about, but that it is an alimony payment. And so we have to pay it. Now, if they do better by getting extra money in, they get to keep it. But we still pay our alimony payment in relation to this formula.
Hey, could somebody just mention very quickly what the composition of that joint agency, oversight agency is? Because I think that's critical.
Right now, the agreement, the understanding between the two parties is that the joint powers agreement will have a board that is comprised of two individuals that are nominated, appointed from the Malibu Unified School District, two individuals who would be appointed from the Santa Monica Unified School from the Santa Monica Unified School District, and one neutral. And the actual composition of that board will be decided after we adopt and execute the joint powers agreement.
Thank you very much. Joe, who's now wandering up to the speakers?
No, so I'm just trying to get clear. So if we, will we be likely have to pay this 16, 17 million for the next 25 years? Like, that's what it sounds like?
Till 2041, 42, but depending on what happens. I gotta get up, sorry. The agreement terminates 2041, 42. So likely until then, we're making some level of payment, but the actual amount is going to be very dependent on what happens in Santa Monica's tax base. So could I see us doing that level for a few years and then as their tax base grows, our payment goes down? Probably. There are some models where we could terminate early. There are other models where we're paying all the way to the end, but realistically, you're probably paying something till 2041, 42, but it'll be a smaller and smaller percentage of the overall budget of the district.
If I could, if I could throw one comment in real quick, you have a compounding effect. As the property taxes go up for Malibu, and let's assume, just because there's a formula that says you take the annual increase and divide it into 72, let's assume the tax rate goes up, tax revenue for Malibu goes up by 7.2%. That means our 40 million doubles to 80 million. And if we're still paying 16 million, it's not as big of a bite.
I don't know that you're going to double, but yeah, exactly.
Paul?
Yeah.
I just want to make it clear, the 16 million is not a set number. It's going to go up by 4% a year. And over time, that's going to turn into a bigger number. But hopefully, our total, our total budget is going to be growing faster than that. But, you know.
I could be wrong. The 16 million's not going to grow. The per pupil revenue is going to grow.
The target amount is going to grow by 4%, and we are backfilling the target. So our number is not increasing by 4%. Our number is backfilling whatever their revenues don't achieve on the 4% growth level. So that 16 could go down to 14. I mean, I really don't know, but if you run models at the historic growth rate, it still stays at 16, 17, 18 million, and then it starts to decline over time as both tax bases grow. So in reality, I think you're going to be hovering around the same level for a while, but it'll be a smaller share of our budget over time, and then it'll start to decline.
But it could increase.
It could. But if it goes up by more than 675,000 from one year to the next, then there's another conversation.
Right.
Mayor, we do have one raised hand on Zoom from Alicia.
Okay, just give me any, Paul, you still on or you off?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, Alicia, you're on, please. Alicia, you there?
Hi, thank you. Yeah, I'm here. Okay, more of a comment, I guess. I'm very nervous about this oversight committee, and I would like to know the outline of how it will be determined. I would really like somebody, staff from the city, to be on this oversight committee. They just have a lot of power, and I'm nervous about the transparency and the issue of trust that we have had with Santa Monica in the past. So I would like to hear a little bit more about how these two members are going to be chosen.
So, thank you, Alicia. Remember, the agreements right now are being negotiated between the city and the Santa Monica-Malibu Unified School District because there isn't a Malibu Unified School District. But at some point, once separation happens, there will be a Malibu Unified School District that will have a Board of Education that will be elected by the Malibu residents and those in the unincorporated areas. So at some point, this will not be a city project any longer. This will be a project of a future, a future agency, a future entity that doesn't exist yet, and its board. And so its board will be appointing the two members to the JPA board. And so it wouldn't be city staff unless that's someone that the board decides to appoint. But it would be someone that the board appoints to the JPA. I hope that answers your question and clarifies that structure a little bit. I do understand the concern. We all understand that we're putting a great deal of, we're putting a great deal of responsibility in the JPA, that we do understand that. It's allowing for there to be some flexibility and some protections, some, it's allowing the agreement to have a little bit of, somewhat of a living document so that the JPA board is allowed to execute things and make sure that there isn't the gamesmanship that someone else mentioned before. But how we form that agreement and then how that board is formed will ultimately, and it's not an unusual structure, right? JPAs exist throughout the state for very similar purposes. So that, that structure and that composition will be determined by a future Malibu Unified School District Board of Education.
Christine, is your question, Alicia?
Can I just ask one more thing about this neutral party member? Will that be determined between the MUSD and the SMUSD boards? Is that the plan, how this neutral person will be determined?
Yes, the idea is that that will be someone who truly understands school finance, understands the intent of these agreements, and is truly a neutral. I can give you an hypothetical. We've talked a lot about that actually being initially, potentially, the mediator who has helped us form this, who has helped us come as far as we've come as parties, because that person at least initially understands intent and has truly been operating as a neutral. But that is someone both the district and the city at this point feels comfortable with. But that gives you an idea of who we're talking about, someone who is truly neutral to both parties, who understands school finance and would understand the terms and the intent of the agreement.
Very good. Any hands? Are we done with that? Bruce?
Just a quick question. I know that the JPA is not near finalized yet, Christine, but what would happen if the two, the two sides that appoint to each can't agree on who the neutral would be?
I'm sure we'll have a protection term or provision in the JPA that addresses that, some type of further dispute resolution.
I think a closed match, you know, one of those Kase matches would be good, where it's all there.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anybody else? Anybody up here? No?
Do we have, are we making closing?
I think we're making closing comments. If anybody would like to, any questions from the audience? Other than others, bring it back to the council table. You know, just remind, I think this has been excellent. I think you've done a yeoman's job presenting a fairly complex situation and making. So from the audience perspective, if you've got suggestions of either things we could have done better or different, you know, please send us an email. You can send it to Alexis. She's more than happy to sort of, you know, take a look at those things. We've got another meeting scheduled. For what date is our next Saturday meeting on? Do you know what that is?
It's Saturday, April 20th.
Saturday, April 20th, we'll be doing this again for the residents, and then there will be subsequent meetings taking place in Santa Monica. So we're going to give this thing, you know, a good breadth of exposure before we do anything. Christine, you're on, yes.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I just, one final closing remark. I wouldn't be a lawyer if I couldn't make one final closing remark. I just wanted to thank the council. I know one of the things that, as we've been in negotiations, one of the things the council was really committed to was making sure that the consultants and had an opportunity to present this information to city residents, because as you know, the city, this has been a major priority of the city for several years. It's been one of their three priorities. And as a result, the city has invested quite a bit of time, quite a bit of staff resources, consultant hours, and quite a bit of money to make this negotiation happen. And the city council was very committed to making sure residents, whether they have children or not, understand where all of that money, all that time, all that effort has gone. And so as we negotiated, the district agreed that we were able to share the details and the terms of this agreement because it was so important to the council that we do this and we do this as quickly as we could. And again, as counsel, as Mayor Euring was just describing, there will be further sessions hosted by the city of Malibu to make sure, again, that there is continued conversation, continued questions. Every consultant that I work with and myself, we feel very comfortable with any hard questions. I feel like every hard question we've gotten from stakeholders, as all of you know, Council Member Silverstein is going to ask the hard questions. All of those questions has made this, all of those questions have made this agreement stronger. So our team does not shy away from hard questions. If we don't know the answer, that means we've missed something. And so if you go back and think about this, watch the recording, please bring us questions to the next meeting, and we will share this throughout the next four or five weeks across the city, and then we will have joint sessions with the district. So I just want to thank the council for being so committed to making sure the residents have an opportunity to express concerns, questions, and get some kind of rallied support behind this agreement. Thank you, council.
And I'll thank all you guys before we finish tonight because you've done a hell of a job getting us to where we are tonight. Any comments from the council table? Paul?
I'm sorry. I just, I just want everybody who's watching this or here today to try and tell as many people as possible about this because as word gets out on this, those people are going to have the same questions you had, the same questions that we had in the negotiations. And it's, it's, it's very comforting to us to hear your questions and realize that we've already considered it. And of course, if you do succeed in stumping us, then we will have a really strong gut check response. But I think that it's being done, and it's been done properly, and I can't thank the staff who helped as much as they did because, I got to tell you, I thought I knew what I was walking into, and as we got into it, I kept realizing that I did not know what I was getting into. And they proceeded to help, and we all came to an understanding of what was going on. And it's not, it's not easy, and you shouldn't feel like, you know, this is ridiculously complicated. It is complicated, but it is understandable.
Anybody else? Yeah, I'd like to put some closing bow tie on this thing a little bit. There's been a lot of misinformation over the last nine years. You know, it's going to be $52 billion, 50 years, never get out of it. Just about every iteration you can imagine has been put forward. And hopefully, this has quieted down some of the misinformation. And we're working with facts as opposed to rumors. The key thing out of this, and I'll go to Jane's comment, I would characterize the structure that we were trying to do as much like a doctor, do no harm. And the intention is to make sure that there is no harm done to either school system's kids. Now, how somebody wants to spend their money later on, that's their business, but this is about revenue and doing it so that we have the revenue to run a school system for Malibu that Malibu can be proud of. And I think the important thing out of this is that we have put together a structure that is affordable for Malibu, and that is one of the biggest hurdles, as I understand it, when this started, and definitely in the couple of years that I've been involved in it here on the council, the ability to prove that Malibu can stand on its own two feet and be its own school district. That's the purpose of this. And the fact that we presented this to you tonight should be evidence that this is possible. And that has brought everybody to a point where the deal is close to being done. The last two agreements to be done are the ones that put the wrapping paper on the transaction. If we can show that we can fund it and operate it, there's very little to keep us from going forward. The joint powers agreement, the operations agreement, these are, how do you run the district that we now know we can afford? And we're down, we're down to things that are more easily solved. They're not easy, but as I think Christine or someone said, trying to separate the IT department, well, that's not easily done, but it can be done, and it will be done. So we are closer to having an agreement today than ever, ever before. This is the beginning of the Malibu School District that you're seeing tonight. You should be proud of the fact that we've gotten this far. I'm proud of the people that have put it together. I mean, our consultants and call it the part-time school board has come a long way, and thank you very much. And listen, we couldn't have done it without all the brains that are in the room. Just a moment, Jane. So this is an opportunity to start our school district. We've talked about when it might occur. There's things that have to be done. We've got legislation that has to be accomplished. There are things that have to be agreed upon. You've got some timing issues, but we're on our way. And tonight is the beginning of that. I think the council, I can't speak for everybody else, but I think our council feels very comfortable with the agreement that's been put in place. We're looking for your input. If we've missed anything, we want to hear it now. Otherwise, we're about to launch the financing, financial side of the Malibu Unified School District. Jane?
First of all, having been one that asks most of the questions, I'd say I am satisfied that a lot of thought and work has gone into this. Is this something that is going to be put at some point to a vote of the people? And if so, I think it's going to be really important to get as many of the residents to a briefing session as possible.
Christine, you weren't answered that? Christine probably ought to answer that.
So, thank you, Ms. Albright. The intent is definitely between this session, the session on the 20th, there will be two joint sessions with this district, one in the district and one here. And then our team, in particular, Mr. Matthews, will be attending PTA meetings over the course of the next six weeks, plus we'll be going to certain, at least two, community organizations. So we're trying to get the message out to parents as well as to residents who show up at council meetings, anyone who wants to show up to those joint sessions. All of that is in an effort to vet the revenue sharing agreement and hear as many questions as possible because at some point in June, the expectation is that we will present the revenue sharing agreement in a public meeting for consideration and vote by the council. It will be after the revenue sharing agreement is ratified by the district. So once the district ratifies it, that will be the trigger for our city council to consider and potentially ratify the revenue sharing agreement in a public meeting.
But I think to answer your question, there will be a vote of the Malibu residents, and I think you're exactly right. I mean, digesting, putting this stuff out so it's digestible, so everybody understands it, I think will be a real key as we move forward.
I will make one other comment, Mayor, I'm sorry. Just in terms of our agenda and where we are, we, our public comments were kind of, we're, I think we were done with public comments and questions. I assume if, I don't know if we can continue. That would be a question.
You, right ahead, what do you need?
Okay. I know it looks like there's an interest in a couple more questions, and I'm not a Brown Act expert, but I
No, I get no problem opening it up for any questions they have, so if anybody wants to ask anything.
Deputy City Attorney Martz?
You got a problem with that? No, you can get it, continue.
Thank you.
We got a question down there with the race team, but you got to come up to the speaker so we can understand what you're saying because otherwise it gets lost in the And it's being recorded, so we need to hear your question.
I just hate speaking at podiums, so I didn't ask my questions. Two things, I do have a lot of concern about this lack of transparency that's sort of notorious with the city of Santa Monica and their school district and their school board and their closed meetings. And a lot of my stories that I've heard are just anecdotal from other parents and other people, but to be relying on them to have these three consecutive years of a certain kind of budget that they're going to have to show and that, and knowing that this is a group of, you know, a city that has built billion-dollar buildings that didn't need to get built, they tore down the history building at Santa Monica High that was a fantastic building, historical building. It's just concerning to think we're going to be sort of suckers that, especially because this goes on until 2050 or 2040-something, that you guys will be gone, I'll be 70, these people will be gone, and other people will be here to keep it up. And will they be checking the balances and doing it appropriately as it sounds like tonight? It sounds like a good idea, but in 15 years, and my kid won't be at Webster anymore, will this be something that people continue to realize that Santa Monica isn't transparent and that we shouldn't trust them, and we should always be checking that they're doing things appropriately? And then the other, completely off that topic, issue is I'm really supportive of the separation. I feel like there should be something, some kind of incentive for teachers that come to Malibu to maybe have an incentive to be Malibu to maybe have an incentive to be paid more or some such because like right now, we have a fantastic person at Webster that does the special education. And she's, like, my daughter's very connected to her. And I think, well, we lose Ms. Jaclyn because I know she lives really close to Santa Monica. Would she want to drive to Malibu for the same pay that she could get in Santa Monica when we separate? Or can Malibu have, it seems like with all of this, it's so much little Malibu is offering to big Santa Monica to have this sort of divorce that we never, I don't know how we got into this agreement with Santa Monica, but we're giving them a lot to break up with them. And what about us? You know, we're just, we're much smaller. We're a smaller group. We're less represented in the school board. We're less represented by voters. It seems like why do we have to keep paying them all this money for all those years? We didn't sign a prenup because we didn't have the opportunity. We would have, you know? I would have said to do that.
Look, I mean, as I look across the room, I got a whole bunch of smiling faces. These are all happily married people. I'm sure there are some, some people out there who have gone through a divorce and these things are always ugly. Okay, I wish I had a, some words I could give you to make it sound, you know, look, I think the pieces they put in place to allow us to make sure that we're looking at what Santa Monica is doing, we've got the ability to look at the accounting, we understand how that works, we're going to do the best we can. I mean, I can't guarantee that nothing's going to pop, but I think-
To have certain things where it's, we know we have to have someone on that.
I think we've put the rules in place and the conditions in place that give us absolutely the best chance to make sure that we're doing this thing above board, no matter what Santa Monica does. So I'm hoping we can continue that as we move forward. Mary Ann?
Well, I was wondering if we could have one of our members of our team stand up and just highlight a couple of the questions that the speaker had.
What I, what I will say to the speaker, because I just want to do this as quickly as possible considering everyone's time, what you saw today was a presentation that tried in as best as possible to provide you kind of a first glance, a user-friendly version of what is, you know, a 20-page legal agreement. And so what you will feel better about at the point that we post the revenue sharing agreement, what you will understand better are that there are very significant spelled out terms and provisions that provide for dispute resolution, that divide for these protections. The same way, you know, all of us won't be in the room in 50, in 20, you know, 2052, whatever culture you think might exist at Santa Monica may not be that culture then either. I don't know. I can't attest completely to all of the concerns you have about the existing Santa Monica School District. But what I will say is they don't have to agree to this. They could have made this very difficult. They've been at the table cooperating and collaborating with us every step of the way because the guiding principle still stands that it is in everyone's best interest to have an independent Malibu Unified School District. So there are provisions in place that will allow the future of people who are here in 2052 to execute whatever they need to execute if they feel like there's some gains in the ship happening. There are protections. And then if there's just a basic disagreement, there are, there is dispute resolution language. The last thing I will say before we move on is any, there's a lot of education code. And there's a lot of provisions in the education code that dictate how we have to handle the certificated as well as the classified personnel that are at Malibu school sites. And so anything, we will at least, at a minimum, obviously provide them what the law requires. And if there's anything else that we can provide that, within the budget and the time of separation, I'm sure the superintendent of the Malibu Unified School District and their Board of Education will definitely look at the opportunities to retain the teachers that we need to retain.
Cool.
Thank you.
Okay.
And I know, I know Paul and Mary Ann want to wrap up because they were pulling the oar for us here. First of all, just to follow up on that last point, I mean, there's, that's what contracts are for. This is going to, this is all spelled out in a lot of detail. And, you know, Ronald Reagan said, trust but verify. We don't trust and we're verifying. So it's, we got a, we got a contract, we've got a JPA that's going to be formed, and that's the best you can do. Want to hear this comment before I finish?
You want to finish or you want to?
Let's say, I mean, look, I wasn't around in Malibu 20 years ago, 30 years ago, when this was all a different era. But, you know, Malibu didn't have the ability to have a school district at one point in time. So Santa Monica was the school district. It provided the schools. The kid grew up. The kid grew up and is doing better now than the parent and wants emancipation. And that makes sense. But, you know, there is a cost because we're paying back for all the years that we, we've been, we've been over-contributing, but we've been over-contributing to make up for time when we weren't over-contributing. And that may not be something a lot of people want to hear, but it's true. And I think that's the philosophy that's coming back at us, and there's some sense to that. I'm not as Pollyannaish as Doug is. I mean, he says, this is the beginning of the separation. This is still a midpoint. We don't know whether this is going to get to go forward or not. There's still a lot of bumps in the road that could, that could stop this. But if it does go forward, as I said before, it's not perfect, but it works. And without this, we just stay the same. Without this, it stays the same forever and Santa Monica continues to control our destiny. And with this, there is a point, it may be in the distant future, but there is a point at some point when we become completely independent. Is there going to be pain between now and then? Yes. Is it any more than the pain that we're experiencing now? Probably not. It's probably, at worst, the same as it is now, and in all probability, better than it is now, and in all, all probability, at some point in time, much, much better than it is now. So we have no right to this. We could go to court with them. We can go to, we can go to the state agency. We can fight with them. We can go to court if necessary. We don't have a right to this in all probability, so we have to negotiate and we have to give them what they want. And it is what it is.
Bruce, it is a path. It's better than what we've seen in the past. My friend, you're up. If you give us your name and-
Thanks. Good mor-, well, good evening. I'm tired. I'm still on Costa Rica time. Thank you, everybody, for tonight. My comment and my question is fairly simple. For the 20th, will we also have documents provided for the Spanish speakers? I just want to make sure we're going to have that documentation for them because currently the Santa Monica School District does not provide the Malibu schools with a bilingual liaison. Mrs. Castanza is fantastic and she has stepped up to help the community, but it takes many hands to inform them. So it's not only just about the residents, it's also about the people that work in this community. I want to make sure that they are aware of what's going on and how this will affect their children. So it's one thing to be able to speak to it, but I want them to have something to take home and sit down and review. I want to make sure we're keeping them in mind as well.
Thank you. I mean, I know that we put a press release out in Spanish to deal with this thing, so I think there was a first step, but I'll let Alexis deal with that.
Yes. So just to confirm, in the work session on April 20th, we will have materials in both English and Spanish. We will also have translation services. So we will have simultaneous translation happening during that meeting as well to make sure that it is an inclusive and safe environment for all participants that are interested in learning more about the revenue sharing. And I see Melissa running back up here, happy to answer any further questions. And if there is a need from the community to have a Spanish-only session, we're also willing to make that happen as well and would like to collaborate on that.
Yeah, the only thing I was going to just chime on is if you have extra of this, I'd like to be able to also take this back to all of the Malibu schools and leave this with, you know, in their main offices. That way the parents can collect them because I do understand that some of them are working late hours, some, you know, two, three jobs. So I just want to make sure that they are well-informed and we are doing everything in our power to deliver the message. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're trying to do that, so I have great faith that our staff will make sure that we have that happen. So back up to the council table. Paul?
Yeah, the lady who spoke before had a, had a question about what happens in 15 years from now. And, and I've, I've been in Malibu for 46 years now. And I can tell you without a doubt that Malibu parents are the most protective of their kids' education people that you're going to find anywhere. And we are not going to have a hard time electing a very active school board that will labor tirelessly to make our schools the best in the country. The other thing I want to say is that in that 46 years I've been here, there have been three attempt, this is the third attempt to do the splits. And, and most of the, the earlier ones, people say, wouldn't that be a great idea? The earliest one. And they spent about six months and they came to the conclusion, this is way too complicated. It isn't going to happen. It fiddled away pretty quick. About 15, maybe 20 years ago, there was a, one of my neighbors on Carbon Mesa Road took a shot at it. And he was, I thought he was doing great, and then he got bogged down. And he, he lived next door to Craig Foster. And Craig got the disease. And Craig is a brilliant guy. He was with Credit Suisse and retired and because he could afford to, and decided to come to Malibu and teach school. And he, he has just dug into this from every angle with amps and all the rest of that. These people are working hard to make it happen, and I'm really honored that we're here to help it happen. Because, you know, the whole thing about even the city of Malibu getting to participate as an equal party with the school board was ridiculously difficult to, to make happen, but it happened. And so we are eager to make it happen and turn over the reins to our own Malibu-elected school board. Thank you.
Mary Ann? Mary Ann?
Okay. So, for people who don't know me, I grew up in this school district. I raised a child in this school district. I'm intimately familiar with the school district, and this is a passion of mine, that this happens. But I stand on the shoulders of everybody else who came before us. And this has been going on for a long, long time. And I want to thank all those people because it's only because of the hard work of everyone else that we're even contemplating this. So thank you to all the former parents and community leaders and everybody else that have just kept pushing this forward. And especially to Craig Foster because he did, he looked at it from a different angle. And he was able to see something and get us to a point where it's no longer if, but it's when. And I do want to thank the current school board. They have been at the table. They have been working with us. And they have stipulated and, and worked so that all the students are protected in the district and the new Malibu district that will be formed. But I ask everyone for patience also because as we know, when we're splitting up things, it takes time and the devils are in the details. We're getting through it, and we want this to last for eternity. And we want this to last for the next generation and the next generation and that they have the safety and security to build the great Malibu School District that I know everyone believes in. So the other thing I wanted to remind everybody, that this is about local control and it's going to be tight at first. It's going to be, you know, we're going to be watching our pennies. But if you look back to when we formed a city, nobody thought we could stand on our own for our city either. But here we are, and we have a great city. We have disagreements. We have fights. We have, you know, positions that one people, one group thinks one way and another group's the other, but we're functioning. And we have a functioning city hall. We have a functioning budget. We have our city, and it's a great thing. And our school district's going to be a great thing also. So I ask everybody, go talk to your neighbors. Go talk to everybody you know. Get them at these meetings. Get them informed. Make sure people know what's going on and they've got questions. Ask them. Whatever way you need to ask them, ask them. Whether it's contacting, you know, Paul and I are the, are the ad hoc committee specifically for this, but make sure you talk to your other council members also. Get those questions in so we can get them vetted. And whatever way you feel best, whether that's coming to a meeting, whether that's emailing to us, our addresses or email addresses are on the city website, please use them and contact us. Talk to your friends. Talk to your neighbors. But let's make this happen. Let's work together. And I'm just so happy and so grateful to our current consultant team, Christine Woods, to Kathy Domenico, to Latonya Kirk, I'm sorry, Kirk Carter, Terry Ryland, who is not here with us today, Mike Matthews, who's also an incredible asset to that, and our city staff, who honestly, we couldn't do without that. So thank you to everybody, and let's keep moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I want to thank everybody who joined us this evening. I would like to have special, I mean, and I think the, if you, if you've learned anything this evening, you've learned it how difficult this process is. This is not, you know, this, this is worse than doing your taxes. Trust me. So I want to thank Latonya, Kathy, I want to thank you. You've done, you did a hell of a job. Thank you very much. Christine, as always, you've been an excellent person driving this whole thing forward. So thank you all very, very much. If you've got any suggestions of how we can approve this, please give us an email and let us know. Then as said, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very, very much.